I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for April 4th, 2023. Roll call, please. Mr. Jameson.
Hall.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Trelka.
Here.
Layland.
Here. Thank you. Would everyone please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on our actions for today? Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on something today, not on today's agenda? Please step to the mic and give your name and address, sir.
My name is Mike Mush. I live at 303 First Street in Warshburn. First, I'd like some information on the contract that was signed with Urban Services for the sewer maintenance. In the minutes, it showed the base salary increase, but it did not show, as far as his hourly rate and his rate for other services, it says Exhibit C of Contract Page 12. How do I go about seeing that and seeing exactly what his new charges are? And...
I was gonna say, we can speak to that, or we can make sure we can go ahead. Let you.
The other thing I have is about a year, just about a year ago, I was here about two properties around my house. The one across the street from me and the one that butts up against the back of my property. As far as garbage, junk, everything being in their yards. And we started a procedure to try to do something about that. We had to, there was two months, and then you had to give them time, and then you did something else, and on and on and on. Anyway, this has been going on now for a couple of years, and nothing's changed. I understand that in Blackhawk County, there's different rules and regulations because of farmers and farming things. But I think we ought to have something for rural neighborhoods and unincorporated communities where something could be done to clean up the properties. Farmers are half mile, miles apart. I live right across the street, and we're in a close-knit area. I just got a new assessment from the county. My assessment went up quite a bit. If I'm going to be able to get that extra money, if it comes time to sell, I need help cleaning up the stuff around me. I understand it's hard to do those things with the policies that we have now, but I guess what I'm asking is, can we put a policy in there for the neighborhood, rural neighborhoods, or unincorporated communities with a different set of rules and regulations than the actual out in the county? I just, I've gone through this with these properties for two years now. Nothing's changed. Whatever procedure that's been going on isn't working. I know there's, and nobody here would like to live next to somebody that doesn't care, whatever, however you want to put it. But I just, I just think that we can do something a little bit better as far as in the neighborhoods or the unincorporated areas.
Now, you mentioned you were here last year or a year ago.
About, I think it was April or May of last year.
Okay.
And, and I've talked to Tom Little, and we've got this procedure, and we've gone, you know, we've gone through the steps that we're supposed to do. Nothing seems to change.
It doesn't change at all. Like, over the course of time, it doesn't improve for a short time and then go back to...
The only thing that approved for a short time was the one straight across the street from me. They did mow their lawn a couple of times through the summer. But as far as garbage all over, tires piled up, that didn't change. The one behind me has actual garbage in the corner of his yard, and we thought we could do something as far as being a health hazard because of garbage. But that was one of those things where they were supposed to notify him, then they give him two months, and then if nothing happens, and they notify him again. And you can go out, look in his backyard now, and there's still garbage, stuff he's tried to burn, and it doesn't burn. It stinks. You get a hot day in the summertime, it smells. I mean, but obviously, nothing can be done. So, and they tell me nothing can be done because of the county ordinances. I think we need to change that.
Mike, that property that you're talking about right now, what street is that on?
It's 302 Second Street. And when they, and I, whoever I talked to last year, and I forget some of the names, his yard is all fenced in as far as chain link fence, so you can't get in his backyard. So it's kind of hard to see from the road. And I told them, walk through my yard, walk up to my, my back property line, and you can see all the stuff that's back there. But then, like I said, I guess the procedure's not working.
Okay. Well, appreciate that.
Mike, this is Tom Little. Is that a renter over there?
The one across the street from me, I think. The one behind me has lived there for probably, oh, gosh, seven, eight, nine, 10 years. And it took about two years, and it started going downhill, and it's just kind of gone downhill every since.
Is that the one that I called on the last time, that one across the street or next door?
The one across the street you called on, and the mowing part got handled, but all the garbage stuff is still there.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like we still need to follow up with code enforcement, make sure the board's all aware of what has been done, and see about going forward, but then exploring if there are things that we want to look at or can take a look at.
I'd appreciate that.
It's been an ongoing issue, like, the whole time I've been on the board. So I think that something, something better needs to happen. Either we need our own code enforcement, also because they don't seem very responsive anytime I've talked to them. But I guess it's getting into discussion, but I appreciate your comment today.
And as far as addressing the question for the urban, I was gonna say, we can make that information available to you. That's public information, so.
Yes. If you want to step in the board office and leave your number, I can call you later, and we can go through it, and I can email it to you, whatever you'd like to see.
That'll work. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Anyone else in public comments that would like to speak on anything today? Anyone on Zoom? All right. Thank you. Item three, Years of Service Award to employees with 20 or more years of service.
Just have one today. It's Brenda Hostetler from the Health Department for 25 years of service. I don't think Brenda's here.
Yeah, she's not. Oh, please. Yeah. Please express our congratulations, but thanks for her service, too. No? Okay. Thank you. Item four, Claims and Payments. Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Michelle, please.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Our total payments today are $327,763.63. Of that, the 60-40 fund, we're paying $1,867.32. We are getting into some construction now, so we do have some payments we're making today. Making a payment to Scheifee Hattery for engineering on Casey Lake restoration. That's $53,500 today. We are also starting to pay for spot rock. We've got a payment in there today for about $38,500. And, I think there's one more, but that's all the significant ones today. Everything appears to be in order.
Move to approve.
And I was gonna say, it's been moved and seconded. So I was gonna say, if there are no further questions, please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Trelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. Sorry. Crews are just doing normal maintenance, mostly this week, hauling rock, grading the gravel roads. We do still have some construction work going on, obviously, our pointer road bridge. They are starting the bridge demolition for that here today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Caitlin Emmerich, interim health director. I wasn't able to make it last week, but I just wanted to thank the board for the National Public Health Week proclamation. We are celebrating Public Health Week this week, and I just want to remind anyone that wants to attend that we're having a community reception tomorrow morning, beginning at 8:30 through 10:00 AM, around, or, excuse me, around 11:00 AM, around celebrating culture and celebrating health. And we'll be kind of spotlighting some of the work that our community health workers do and the impact that they have in our community, and discussion about how to continue to work together for public health and prevention in our community.
Is it a scheduled program that you'll be having those presentations?
It is.
Or is it just that people aren't going to go around the room? All right.
Yep. There will be a component that is presentation, and then there's a component of kind of small group discussion and report out.
So it'd be great if everyone showed up at 8:30.
That would be great.
Throughout the day.
You can come at 8:00 if you want to. There's going to be a little bit of kind of getting some coffee and things from 8:00 to 8:30.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room with an update? Anyone on Zoom with an update? Seeing none, we'll move on. Hearing time will be later this morning on the proposed Blackhawk County budget for the year, ending June 30, 2024. Item eight, consent agenda.
Sorry, Ms. Layland. Do we do the minutes yet?
Oh, did I skip over those? Yeah, let's hope they were uneventful, but okay. Item six, minutes approved from March 28, 2023.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, minutes are approved. Moving on to item eight, the consent agenda. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote. A single resolution without separate discussion unless someone wishes to remove some item to be discussed. Hearing none. Please answer as your name is called.
Need a motion for this one, though.
Oh.
So moved.
I'm just gonna skip right through. I'm going for the hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Tim. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Trelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item nine, contracts and agreements. Resolution that the lowest responsible quote received from Boulder Contracting Grundy Center, Iowa, for Project LFM-7012-7X07, Bridge Approach Repair on Daiset Road between Eagle Road and Shrock Road of Blackhawk County with a total quote of $88,004. The engineer's estimate was $47,755. Sorry. Be awarded and direct the chair to sign resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract to receive and place on file the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ryan?
Yeah. So this is Bridge Approach Repairs on Daiset Road. There are three bridges that we're doing some repairs to the paving just in advance of the bridges. We did receive one quote from Boulder Contracting. We did work kind of after that bid deadline to get an additional quote on the work, just to kind of verify kind of where prices were. This was higher than we anticipated it would be. The second quote we did get was just over $89,000, so they were both very close. We're confident that those numbers are, you know, reflective of the work that the contractors will be doing. And we just ask that you guys approve the work and allow us to move forward with the project.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan? It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Trelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item B is a resolution that the memorandum of understanding between Blackhawk County and the Office of the Chief Information Officer to provide CrowdStrike EDR software and 24/7 security operations center service to the county at no charge be approved and signed by the chair as recommended by Al Yu, Information Technology Director.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Good morning, Board. Al Yu, IT Director. This is the MOU for CrowdStrike. This is a service that the OCIO is providing to all counties in Iowa. And so I just ask that you consider approved and signed. Any questions I may ask, answer for you.
Does this do anything particular as far as this, this software, something different than others that they've offered to us?
This is in replacement. So we currently, they offer a product called FireEye that we currently have on all our computers. That contract is coming to an end, so the OCIO has contracted with CrowdStrike. I will say CrowdStrike is arguably the number one product for EDR. If you're not familiar with what EDR is, can think of it as an antivirus, but sort of on steroids. It kind of, it's two products, multiple products in one, so it's an antivirus, so it does preventative and reactive. So it is definitely the direction we want to go, and the fact that they're offering it for free is a, is a great service to us. And it's saving the county a lot of money.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. It's been moved. Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Trelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item 10, Other Business. Motion to approve Joseph Day as Blackhawk County's proxy at the 2023 Annual Meeting of the Iowa Individual Health Benefit Reinsurance Association, and direct the chair to sign the proxy form as recommended by Tim Jameson, Systems Real Estate Tax Manager.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. You have any comments you want to make on this, Tim?
Not really. Unless one of you wants to attend the meeting, I'd recommend we do this.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, April 18, at the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed ordinance number 77-278 from a request submitted by Lisa Johnson to rezone 1 1/2 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to construct one new single-family home at east of 5405 Miller Creek Road.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:07 on Tuesday, April 18, at the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed ordinance number 77-279 from a request submitted by Ahava Acres LLC for a conditional amendment to allow for indoor weddings within the CM Commercial Manufacturing District at 1902 East Shrock Road.
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D, motion that the grounds use request for Hawkeye Community College to use the Blackhawk County Courthouse parking lot on Saturday, April 22, 2023 for a forklift training and certification be approved and to receive and place on file the certificate of insurance for same and direct the chair to sign the permission letter for same.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Rory, did you want to address some of the specifics?
Yes. Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. It's been brought to our attention some concerns with the potential liability with this practice in our parking lot. We, my understanding that Debbie did reach out to PDCM, and I believe she may have shared that response with the board. But even further than that, one recommendation I'd like to make would be to utilize a waiver and a release of liability document that the folks at Hawkeye would sign, also anybody that's partaking in the forklift training. And this would be very similar to what is provided to the folks that come in and do the mock trials here at the courthouse, with the exception of a bit of a verbiage change would be for adults rather than children. So I would like to make that recommendation on top of what was provided by PDCM, just to further protect the county.
Include that in the motion.
Any other questions for Rory? All right. This is a motion. With that additional waiver added to this request, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E, motion that the travel request submitted by Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same. $156 for Brad Metcalf to attend the one-day university offered by IMWCA from April 10 to April 11.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible board action to proceed with drafting a request for a proposal for professional design services with the intent to create a new Blackhawk County logo brand and to create an ad hoc marketing committee comprised of representatives of county departments currently utilizing the county logo with the intent to review/recommend agency respondents, provide guidance for logo development, and to make final logo recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And Mr. Paul, you brought this to our attention, so I'm sure that you want to speak to it a little bit.
Sure. So, you know, I brought this concept up during budget discussions.
Sorry. Tavis, can I look at your mic? It's just been brought to our attention. I don't think it's working correctly.
There it is. Now it is.
Okay. I was gonna say, we can move on.
All right. But the light, the light probably helps a little bit.
Great.
So I brought this, this concept of rebrand up during budget discussions. We delved into it a little further, looking back through some of the recordings. It looked like March 2. We had a specific discussion about this, and, and at that meeting, it was, it felt like there was agreement to utilize existing, existing dollars, I believe it was general supplemental. Does that sound?
General.
General? Okay. To craft a rebrand. Send this out to RFP, which I've put a draft together, at least for the sake of discussion and picking apart, and hopefully coming to some agreement on how to proceed. But I know that we've got a couple of projects in the hopper that if we had a, a new logo, it would make sense for us to, to utilize those versus printing and developing items and then having sort of exacerbating outdated logos. There has been some interest, as I noted in the, in the agenda item, there's been some interest from, I think, every department that would be utilizing this logo. That excludes Public Health, Sheriff's Department, Public VA, and Conservation. We did not include them because they've got their own departmental logos. But there is the, there's the framework for the ad hoc committee to make the recommendations as outlined, and to do the work as outlined in the, in item F. So more than happy to answer some questions or have some discussions or...
Sure. And that's really kind of what you want to do today, is really kind of talk about those things that...
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, if, if, if we're at a point where we can move forward with an action, that's, that's fine. If, if we need to, you know, wait a week, like I said, we've got a, there's a, there's a draft here. Emailed that out middle of the week last week, I believe Thursday morning. And so, yeah, just opening up for, for chat.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. I was gonna say, and I know, and I apologize, like I say, for kind of the back and forth on discussion, possible board action. But when I, like, looked at your proposal, too, was to proceed with drafting the request. So I thought, I didn't know if you wanted our input today or just to start providing it to you. So a question, and I know you've worked personally and professionally, I said, on, on logo development and branding with your own business. But I, so my first question, I guess, when I thought it was, is it important or would it be important for us to do the strategic planning aspect of it when we're looking at, and that's just some of the questions as I...
Sure.
I know it probably could be done other ways. I just wondered if that was, since that's something we also hope to do.
Sure. I mean, I think typically in your strategic plan, it's, it's much more focused on the orientations of government. To, to have a rebrand in a strategic plan, certainly not unheard of, for a strategic plan to also call for a rebrand. But a rebrand, I don't think a strategic plan is, is required for.
Oh, no. Yeah, I know. And I didn't mean requirement. I just, even looking at your first, like, the purpose is to develop a strategically driven brand. And so I just wondered if that would be something that we'd do after, not that we have to.
Sure.
Wondered if that was, that was one of the questions.
Sure. Yeah. But theoretically, there's, there's, just knowing where we're at with budget and the, the expressed, I guess, intent, coming from that March 2 meeting, that we would move along with, with doing this. We could do it out of this year's fund. I thought it just made the most sense to go ahead and get it done now, knowing that a strategic plan takes a number of months.
Sure. Well, and I think when we talked a little bit last week, too, we, you maybe thought we needed to spend that 23 money and get it done before June 30, and we do not, as far as, I want to make sure that that's clear, too, that we could do that anytime. But if it doesn't, and I'm not opposed, going forward, just wondered if that was still so, if that is a possibility, if we wanted to do it, but not that we had to.
I can see one benefit of moving forward with, with the rebranding and logo separate from doing the exercises that we'll, we'll do with the strategic planning. And that would be just to keep the strategic planning really focused on the operations of, of government, our, our interactions with the public and all that, instead of, you know, spending, you know, because, yeah, true, these, these two could move together at, at the same time. But I, I would just rather see, when we do that strategic planning, that the focus really is on, on our operations, on our relationships within the county government, our relationships within the community, and, and all that kind of stuff. And I could, so I, so I would want to see us not, I don't know, distracted is not the right word, because this is an equally important thing. But I want to see us just have the focus that both of these, these different areas need and deserve, I think.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, that makes sense, too, looking at them as two very different purposes, I guess. Not that they aren't related and tied together, but I just thought, too, yeah, no, that certainly, like I say, I see that as important. And I think we have probably talked a lot about the strategic plan of what we wanted to do, and say how we'd like that designed. So, yeah, that would be, would be good, too. Some of my other questions were related, I guess, to the fact that there would be a committee, which is something different than we usually do. Typically, like, the board has been involved, I think, especially since this comes from the board. And I don't know what other thoughts are as far as doing that, when you propose like the, not that there couldn't be a marketing committee or people, individuals that you think would work well with that. But I just thought, as far as the interviews or the, even, even involving, I guess, us receiving the information for those that want to look and see, you know, what we receive. But I just thought, too, from the interview standpoint, when you get to the three interviews, I believe was the number you'd selected, if that would be something like the board and the public, I suppose even anybody kind of would be open to that, or if we're interested in that.
I mean, I, I don't think it's, I just thought that the ad hoc committee sort of made sense, similar to the website redesign committee that I'm serving on, that it made sense to have, to me, in my head, to, to not burden the board with, you know, this work and, and instead having staff in the departments that would, that would be utilizing the logo to, to help shape it. But if the direction of the board is to, is to keep it as a, as a board exercise, then I'm, I'm open to that.
That was just a thought. I don't know what others, how others feel. I, I mean, I'd be interested in seeing, I guess, the presentations. I don't know that everyone is or not.
If I'm not, I just want to be informed.
Of what, the three? Well, I guess, the action.
I mean, I would envision, you know, the, the, the three, you know, the, the top three. And it's a 15, it's a, here we go, let me get, get deeper in here. The 15, $15,000 I don't think is going to garner a, a major ad executive agency, right? It's a, it's a reasonable amount, but it is likely not going to be a really strenuous process with, with hundreds of applicants. And so I think that ad hoc committee could make the recommendation, you know, speak to the board about the justifications for making that recommendation, could share, you know, whatever the, the list of interested agencies that did submit, and, and keep, keep the county abreast and keep the supervisors abreast as we, as we move forward.
I was just making sure mine was working.
So in that process, it could be, I guess, as the steps be an update or something like... like that too with the?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, what are your thoughts, Chris or Tom, or I guess as far as the board involvement in it or not?
Yeah, no, I, um, yeah, I'm trying to go back and forth between two, but I like the idea of having the, the different county departments represented that would, you know, but I could see having two, um, supervisors, and I would recommend you, Linda's chair, and, and Tavis, since he has, um, kind of the most amount of expertise in this area. Um, it'd be, that would be cool, very comfortable with that.
Tom, have you got any thoughts on it as far as you want to?
You know, I'm not necessarily against it, um, there's still some questions out there, obviously, we've been through this before, uh, Tavis did mention the departments that wouldn't participate as far as the logo, so that kind of leaves a very small amount of the county left, it'd be like the Engineers Department and a few cars, I guess, maintenance, and that's about it. Um, and it's similar, is in line what we did the last time. Um, if the county was to follow all the way through, through this preliminary part, is there an estimation on the logo cost, the application, uh, change in the letter heads and so forth, or what the total cost would be? I think that's important before we invest in 15,000. And this ad hoc committee, is it going to include any public, uh, people on there? Because I know it was mentioned during the election that we, on that, uh, vision, uh, that the county had, we need to include public, which we did the last time, but, you know, they have just as much say in it as the board of supervisors or any employees would on what their county labels, so I think the public should be involved. So, I think we have quite a few more questions that need to be answered. The biggest one is what's the whole thing going to cost us? And in the end, what are we achieving, you know, or to put a logo on a few vehicles? When he named so many other departments that have their own, um, I understand Conservation is going to put together their own committee and redesign their parks, uh, that was done internally years ago also, and then, uh, the Health Department obviously does their thing, the Sheriff does their thing, um, and so does the VA, so you're probably not looking at very many vehicles, uh, even though there still would be a cost and then the letterheads and so forth, so, um, I'm not necessarily against it, but there's a lot of questions that got to be asked, I think, before we move on with any expenditures of money.
Yeah, I mean, specifically on the, on, on the cost part, you know, the, the digital applications of the logo is simply updating a file, uh, and the, the $15,000 fee for an agency would be, um, not just to conceptualize, conceptualize the design, but to deliver it, uh, you know, in that digital format, uh, to the county for, for digital use, so, um, letterheads for the most part, uh, we can do a, a, a deeper dive, but I'm pretty sure, this is pretty standard practice, that letterheads are printed, um, it's not, not a huge stack of pre-printed letterheads, uh, the way that has been done, you know, probably in, in years past, uh, most of it's all saved on your Word file or your, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a part that's printed as, as a singular piece and not, um, a separate paper that's, that's having to be refreshed, but, um, yeah.
So, the vehicles probably is the larger expense, I'm thinking, or I'm trying to think of what we did on?
Yeah, when I, when I brought it up in, in March, it was specifically for the digital versions, um, that, you know, I acknowledge that there is, I recognize that there is some need, there would be some need of, of continued implementation of a rebrand, uh, but that could come out of a future, a future budget, um, and that was the, that was the indication back in March, and I'm still, I would still be comfortable with that.
But it's, as far as we know though, there's nothing else, I mean, it's vehicles probably, I'm thinking, because letterhead, you're right, probably isn't, I'm just thinking that's probably the next major thing if, if we do those.
Yeah.
As far as the money also, Linda, the $15,000?
Yes.
Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be spent before June, because it's going to be in the reserves, uh, the money's not spent, goes back to the reserves, so the boards, if they decide to move ahead with this, the money is always going to be there whether it's, uh, in FY '23 or FY '24.
Yeah. Thank you.
I do think, since we're, um, only talking about really a handful of vehicles, that the cost implementation is going to be significantly lower than, than what other entities in the community have, have gone through recently.
And I wish I, I don't even remember what it was for us to do those vehicles, so I, yeah.
Well, the hardest thing was, um, we have vehicles that are all different colors, they're not standard, you have black vehicles, you got white vehicles, you got red vehicles, and it was hard to get a logo that adjusted to all of them.
So, so typically in logo design now, that, that's achieved by having multiple variations of a singular logo, and so you'll have a, a whited out version, a blacked out version, um, and a, and typically a full color version, uh, which does alleviate, um, so the, the full implementation caution there, it's, it's, it's pretty standard practice, and it would be a request within that, um, from the design, with the designer, to make sure we get a, um, a design that has that flexibility.
I think that, that's the problem with the current logo, is getting into just a little bit of design, there's no, um, effective way of removing like the background of it, and so it's just a block that's just going to be put on top of whatever it is, no matter whether it blends or not, but the modern logos usually have, you have a version of the backgrounds erased and it kind of just blends into whatever it is you're, you're working on.
Would we be changing that logo plaque that's in front of Linda right now, which is a duplicate, I believe? I'm talking about the big one down below.
Kind of forgot myself.
Yeah, that one's going to go in my garage.
Again, you know, it would be a board decision, uh, the, the initial discussion was just for the digital version, but, uh, I would believe at some point, we'd want to make sure that our, our branding is fully implemented.
I like our current logo, but I understand the limitations of it, and it would be nice to see something more modern.
I, I thought, yeah, I've talked to people, I said, in the last couple of weeks too, in addition to earlier on, and I said, there have been the people that like the logo, maybe think it should be changed, but do like it, which surprised me a little bit, people that don't like it, and then others that don't really have a strong opinion, I guess, one way or the other, was kind of like, so that logo is probably not as critical to them, I'm thinking, as their work.
When was the current logo implemented? Does anybody know?
Yeah.
2014, I believe, Dan.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, so we thought about 10 years.
It looks older.
Yeah, it looks older.
Cut up, we cut a little bit of heat back then, because the original logo was from some artist Waterloo, and, um, they kind of did want us to change that logo, then we had different color versions, and nobody could come to the conclusion on which was the better color version, and, um, it was quite a process really, and then the cars was another one, because I think at the time, we thought it was going to go on more vehicles than it did, and, um, so it was, um, it was an experience, let me put it that way.
Yeah, first time for everything. So, no, some of my other questions then, that I had, were just related to timelines and things like that.
Sure.
And, and the next, because I thought, when I saw in there the distribution, if, and I know these can all change, but I meant just giving an example, that you had it, like, if it dropped today on the 4th, then the deadline was April 17th, it was just two weeks.
Yeah.
Is that, I'm just asking, because I know you've done similar.
I think that's fairly, that's fairly standard.
Was it two? But so many times, so many things I think of, like a month or some other things, but this, I thought I wasn't familiar with, so I was just asking, that two weeks is a, because it's a very quick timeline that you put.
Mm-hmm, sure, sure.
For everything.
By all means, you know, open to, open to other suggestions and timelines, a little bit of that was, um, you know, with a, with a thought, you know, specifically to the Pinecrest sign, if, if it made sense for us to try to have this in hand before that sign is finalized, but, um, if, if, um, if that's not necessarily a huge concern of the board, then we could adjust the timeline to, to not be so expedited.
I think all parts of the display of that sign will be digital, right? Or, or is there a framing?
There is, there's a frame.
I think there's going to be a frame of some type, but I think they're working on that now, so I think with the sign company, correct? Yeah, so I know they were still negotiating, not negotiating, but on the?
Do you want me to speak to the?
Sure, if you wish, yes.
Um, so the, the original design that was proposed with the bid, um, it has been requested to be reworked, so Nagel Signs is the company that's doing the development of the Pinecrest Building sign, and they've provided a couple of different options that we've, um, presented to Colleen and Yolando, um, as other county tenants of the Pinecrest Building, and, um, so we're kind of doing that negotiation process with Nagel right now, and then we'll bring that back to Rory, Michelle, and anyone else on the board that wants to kind of weigh in on the final, um, design. There, there is a spot to put the logo, um, however, they also said that they can create the sign as such that the logo can be added at a future time and kind of just leave space for it, so I think either way, it's flexible.
Super, well, thank you. And, and my only concern, with a quick timeline, that especially when you talk about involving other people in this committee and everybody, I think, once we got through with budget, their plates were very full, and they've had a lot of projects and things going on, so I just thought to think everybody would be able to participate in a quick timeline like that too, but?
Yeah, when I, when I gauge interest, I did share the timeline.
Okay.
Um, again, we can, we can adjust that, um, but, uh, folks were, um...
Well, you have had more experience with the timeline for the logo, I don't know if that was in, in regard to your branding as well though, but I thought, to me, I thought two weeks was very quick turnaround to not allow as many as are interested, but I don't know, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's pretty typical, but if, but if we're saying, yeah, that we wanted to, to, uh, to make an adjustment on that timeline, I think that's, I think that's fine, um, but I think two weeks is also sufficient for, for most designers.
And typically, how many responders do you think have you got received? I know Waterloo's done their logo, you've experienced Waterloo as some of the others, I don't know if you've been?
Yeah, no, great, again, you know, experienced Waterloo, the, the, the budget was a little heftier, uh, and so, um, there was a few more respondents, and, and those tended to be more agencies. Um, I have worked with two different organizations since, um, that sent out for, um, proposals and, and went through a rebrand or a brand establishment, um, both of those were within two or three weeks of, of publishing, that they were, that was their deadline to get them back, so, yeah.
Seems realistic to you and doable.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to be the only one asking questions here, but I, oh, and I noticed in the budget item where you mentioned, well, budget's an important consideration, it will not be the sole deciding factor in awarding this project, so I wondered, has the, if there's a matrix or some type of something the TB used for the criteria and the judgment of these?
Um...
That's something, I guess, from a government standpoint, that when we do some of the decisions, it's not the lowest bid or whatever, too.
Sure.
There are factors, but also to, that we have the criteria for them when we use it.
Mm-hmm.
Has that been developed, or is there something?
I've not developed that, uh, I haven't had to use, I haven't had to been, been that strenuous, uh, in, uh, when I've, when I've gone through, um, with the sort of pseudo-public organizations that I've, I've dealt with on something like this, um, you know, basically just, just to ensure that it's not, again, simply the lowest, uh, the lowest bid, uh, but the design work and the, and the history of the designer is, um, is a, is a qualification, right? But I'm open to making that edit or however that needs to be done.
Other questions, comments, other than, to consider going forward, or, and because I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, like I say, you're just saying to, to prepare the draft, then we could change the dates.
Yeah.
Somewhat, I mean, not that they wouldn't, couldn't hold to a pretty tight frame still, but we can still change those and just kind of rework the, because I didn't mean to sit here and talk about.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Does everyone like the idea of the committee? I, I was starting to think, is there a way to involve others? I, I just thought, I know those are the ones going to be utilizing it, but I, I don't know, and maybe that's, I'm just thinking it's all of our logo, you know, whether we use it or not, but?
I could see involving someone, um, from the Health Department, just because they recently, you know, they underwent this kind of process, recently they might, you know, have some things that they, you know, maybe they wish they did different, or just insight, you know, from that process or, or whatever.
I think there is, you know, there's certainly an opportunity to add into this, if, if we're going to make some edits, to add in some requirements for the designer, to do some discovery, not just with, with the members of the ad hoc committee, um, but, you know, we can figure out a way to gauge interest and support in, you know, a handful of versions, um, that the designer sets forth.
And perhaps it could be, since at that level, supervisors, it's always different, because you have two or more or whatever, but, um, maybe just to invite the department heads to that, those meetings, and those that want to or have an interest or are curious or have, and available.
Mm-hmm.
So, it would be not just feeling it was exclusive to those that have the, have the, agreed to it.
Sure.
I like that, just because I like to see more people involved in it, engaged in it, knowing about it too, if we're not going to do it publicly here.
Yes, we would, there, we would probably change, uh, item two and the contract dates, that first draft date, we'd probably add a, some additional time there between that first draft and the final draft, uh, to allow for some, uh, you know, additional input and, uh...
Do you know if there'd be local interest? I mean, I'm a, I know there isn't always, but that there would be local?
I would suspect.
So, okay, so I, I mean, hope that, but if not, it isn't?
Just, just dealing with, again, a couple of other organizations that have helped them through rebrands, uh, on the tourism side, um, there were, there's at least one agency, I believe two agencies, um, or designers, that, uh, and those, that, that did apply for those contracts and those dollar amounts, those budgets were closer to what we're looking at.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments?
No, I, I feel good.
So, action you'd like us to do today was to, like, to give you the approval to proceed with drafting the, the risk request?
Yeah.
Maybe coming back then to us with, in the next week or whatever works for you or something?
Yep, I'll come, I'll come back next week.
With the finalize.
With some changes here on adding dates and, uh, some criteria for, um, gathering input, maybe work with Mike on the language on the, on the budget side, so that we can figure out, how do we qualify folks or what that needs to look like, but?
Oh, okay, kind of a major, okay.
We're not approving a contract today, Linda.
No, not at all, no, just the request to move forward with redrafting or drafting this proposal.
Drafting the RFP, yep.
To go out. And we do want to take action, or I mean, sometimes we would just say, yeah, to go forward with it, know you had the board support, but if you'd prefer, we take action on that?
I'm okay, just knowing that I'll, I'll bring it, uh, I'll have it on next week's agenda for us to, to say, give it an up or a down, so that we can get the RFP, distribute it.
Okay, is that all right with everyone?
Sure.
Okay, super, thank you. Okay, moving on to item G, the reason we're here today, Michelle, right? The time is 9:47, and we are entering into the hearing on proposed Black Hawk County budget for the year ending June 30th, 2024. And we start this part of the meeting with introductions by the board chair, and traditionally, we usually have the, um, supervisors announce that they're present, and we just go around the room, and then, um, the elected officials and, um, people present for the, um, hearing, elected officials and department heads and others here in the room to please state that you're here, so, Tom, would you like to start?
Yeah, Tom Little, Black Hawk County Supervisor.
Chris Schwartz, Black Hawk County Supervisor.
Tavis Hall, Black Hawk County Supervisor.
Linda Layland, Black Hawk County Supervisor.
Ann Traulfe, Black Hawk County Supervisor.
Tim Jamison, Real Estate Tax Manager, representing the auditor's office.
Michelle Weidner, Finance Director.
I don't know if I'm supposed to introduce myself, but Mike Trine, Assistant County Attorney.
Others in the room, I said so, no, thank you.
Sandy Smith, County Reporter.
Rory Gaby, Mayfair County Attorney.
It's the Net, Black Hawk County Sheriff's Office.
Caitlin Emmerich, Interior and Home Director.
Al U, IP Director.
Brian Brennan, Assistant County Chair.
Mike Hendrickson, Director, Black Hawk County Conservation.
Mike Hendrickson, Director of Black Hawk County Conservation.
Mia DeFosse, HR Director.
No, probably the difficult part. And those on Zoom, are there, we have some department heads and others on Zoom. Would you like to try the difficult task of going in some order?
Colleen Schipper, General Assistance Coordinator.
Judy Flores, 911 Director.
Yolanda Lovless, Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to this, item two is the motion to receive and place on file the proof of publication and the notice of hearing as published March 21st in the Courier and March 23rd in the Hudson Herald. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item three is the reading of the Black Hawk County Compensation's Board Salary Schedule for Fiscal Year 24. Mr. Jamison, will you help us with that today?
I will try. So the Compensation Board recommended the following salary increases for the elected officials for fiscal year 24. For the County Attorney, a 10% increase to $166,279.11. For the County Auditor, a 10% increase to $101,249.05. For the Board of Supervisors, a 3% increase to $44,367.22. For the County Recorder and County Treasurer, both 10% increases to $101,102.56. And for the County Sheriff, a 10% increase to $152,910.42. During budget deliberation, the Board of Supervisors agreed to reduce those by 100%, meaning that the FY '24 salaries will be the same as the current rate. I can read those. For the County Attorney, that would be $151,162.83. For the County Auditor, that would be $92,044.59. For the Board of Supervisors would be $43,074.97. For the Recorder and Treasurer, that would be $91,911.42 each. For the County Sheriff, that would be $139,009.47.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Item number three, oops, I'm sorry, number four, presentation by Michelle Weedner, Finance Director.
We could let Tim do it.
Let's, we can have him say it again. Great, looks like everything's working.
Well, it's not too soon.
Okay.
Wow. It might be working, yes. We're going to admire Casey Lake at Hickory Hills Park right now for a minute. We need to start off with something positive. Yeah. So one of the things I just decided I wanted to explore a little bit was Black Hawk County's, some important statistics and how we relate to other counties in the state. So these first few slides might be something a little different than you've seen before, but I just was curious to see how we, how we compare with other counties in the state. And we are the fifth largest county by population, but we gained only 54 residents in the 2020 census. That's 0.04%. That is the lowest growth rate of the top 10 counties. And unfortunately, the rural areas of the county lost 439 residents, which is 4.22%. What I think is really significant is Dallas County, which is in the Des Moines metro area. They grew the most by 51% and 33,539 residents. So I thought that was important to note. And I will say, the action that you took as a board last week to approve an application for potentially improving broadband access in the rural areas, maybe that will affect this in a positive way. I, I hope so. I also, well, again, we looked at population. I just kind of broke these out so you can see the numbers. The largest, of course, is Polk County with about 492,000. We are fifth at 131,000. We were fourth in 2010, so we did drop one section there. And in terms of our taxable property value, we are the sixth largest in terms of a property value that is not captured in a TIF district. And we are seventh in actual property tax dollars. Our urban and debt service levies are both seventh. Unfortunately, the rural rate is fifth. And we've been talking a lot about our fund balances, so that made me curious about how we fit with the other nine large counties. Again, Polk County is so much larger, it's hard to even put them on the same chart, but I did do that. This chart is organized by dollars of fund balance. But when you look at percentage of expenditures, which is a really common term that GFOA and the state, I know Iowans for Taxpayer Relief is talking about fund balances in that manner. Black Hawk County is leading the top 10 this year, and this is June of '22 is the most recent, at 71%. I will say, there were four counties that do not have their audits posted yet on the state website, so those I took from their budgets. And those, we know those are estimates, so I don't know where they're going to turn out at. But I, so I also put fiscal '21 on here for two reasons. For one reason, I had all 10 audits out there so I could give you actual numbers. But I also thought it was interesting to see the changes in terms of growth or not. Black Hawk County grew the most, and I think Potawatomi grew some, too, and then Polk. But Polk is also spending some of theirs, so their percentage didn't necessarily increase a lot. So the average percentage of these top 10 is 46% of expenditures. And I know there was an article posted somewhere that Iowans for Taxpayer Relief has quoted the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization, that they all think the ideal level should be between 15 and 30%, which is really none too high in my opinion. I just thought you would find that interesting to see those.
They didn't give any justification for it, though, they just...
No, not really.
Robert Dorquist said so.
Yeah. And I always, I have always felt that 25% is probably the very minimum because the example I give is that for local government, our, we get our, our primary paycheck, which is property taxes, we only, the bulk of it comes twice a year. And the first payment doesn't come until October. So 25% of your year's gone by before you get your first paycheck. So you can relate that to yourself if you were having to work for three and a half months before your first check came. That's why I think, one reason I think we need solid reserves.
And Spear has always kind of preached that to us, too, that 25% was a minimum. So it's interesting, it drops so far below for some.
Yeah, and it's, it's always fun, banks and bonding. Everybody likes to loan you money if you have so much money that you don't need to loan, to borrow money, but that's, that allows you to get better interest rates and we know credit's an important rating, so that's another reason we would not want it to drop below the 25%. And I probably would prefer we not go that low. So the next slide, I'm just sharing some of the budget highlights of the way we publish a budget. Our countywide tax levy that applies to all properties is $5.57. I'm just going to round these a little bit. Our total tax collections for that countywide levy is 32.6 million. And our rural tax levy is $3.66 and another three and a half million to compare how much smaller those property values are. So the, the rural properties pay a total of $9.24 because they pay both of those first two. We had what I think is a really exceptional year with the budget in that we were able to reduce our total tax askings by $678,706. Our debt service tax askings declined by 11.7% or $229,590. Our assessed valuation did grow this year by 1.91% or nearly 10 million, but our taxable valuation, and this is probably the big story for this year because it's never happened before in my career in government, that the state came back and reduced taxable property values below what they originally released January 2nd. And they waited until about February 20th to make that decision. Ended up that our taxable valuation then went from a slight increase to a decrease of 1.13% or a decrease of 66.6 million. And that actually made our taxable valuations drop below the 23 level. So that, that was unfortunate. That's all related to changing the classification of multi-residential property, which we won't get into all those details, but that's why that happened. Another highlight this year, we were able to redirect the 50% of our local option tax that we were using to pay debt service on road construction. We are now able, starting in '24, we'll use it directly for road construction. The impact to our taxpayers, which is something people always want to know about, what happens to me. And I do want to say, I know that assessment rolls notifications were just mailed out to residents. And I know there's been questions from people thinking that the budget we're doing now is being impacted by those. They are not. Those assessment notices are for next year's budget, the FY '25 budget. And of course, we don't have any idea yet what the rollbacks will be. I suspect, based on what we're hearing across the state, that rollback is going to be more. So although their values are going up, the rollback's going to cause their property value to be taxed at less. So it, it's just too soon to know what the impact will be for next year. But for this year, we have really good news for urban residential properties in that their taxes will remain flat. So in a year where we all have, every time you turn on the news, we hear about inflation, we are very fortunate that we are not impacting those residents with an increase. Commercial and industrial properties will actually drop, and, and I'm using an example of $100,000 of taxable value. They will drop $5. And for commercial industrial, that's really for valuation a little bit higher. Another law change this year was that for the first $150,000 of value for commercial industrial, they're actually going to have the residential rollback, so they will pay less on that first bit. I did not try to incorporate that into here. And again, we, as we talked about before, multi-residential, their, their rollback rate dropped from 63.75% down to 54.65 to match residential. So their taxes are actually declining $54 or 15%, which is a pretty large reduction for them. And after this, they will be taxed the same as residential. Our residential rural properties actually, unfortunately, will see an increase of $9 on $100,000 taxable value. And ag, agricultural property, and this has something to do with their rollback, which is all based on a really complicated set of productivity and being tied to residential property. Those taxes will rise by $31, still only 3.74%. So even that is probably lower than what we're seeing inflation. So even though no one wants to see increases, I think when you compare us, what would happen with inflation, the board did a good job and the staff with setting their budgets ashore. So in terms of our property valuation changes, I did show you the original FY '24 values that were sent out and that, and we, we did have growth at that point, up to five, almost $6 billion, 5.976. But then, when the revised values came out in February, that was brought back down to 5.8. That's, so we ended up with a 3.26% decline in the rollback factor, making less of a residential property taxable. So our total property taxable valuation actually declined 1.13% this year. Again, kind of surprising in a year of inflation. Taxable values for rural property, we also saw a small decline there, not nearly as much. The original information was 979 million, dropped to 964. And the percentage of change, we see the 1.1% of the total countywide coming down. And then the rural only still was an increase of 1.4%. And I think we've already talked about everything on this slide, so we're going to skip right over it. I'm showing you the trend now in our levy rates. This is just the rate, which, because that's only one piece of a three-part formula, it's not as significant to me as actual taxes, but it's always interesting to see our urban rate declined slightly and our rural rate increased slightly. So then we have our urban levy composition. As you know, we use several different levies. The basic levy, which is $3.50 per thousand. General supplemental, which declined only by two cents this year, down to $1.80. And debt service, which declined by three and a half cents, down to just over a quarter, 26.6 cents. For rural, their total levy, again, you've got the three we've already discussed, and then we add in the rural basic of $3.66, bringing their total rate up to the $9.23. So then we can talk about our expenses. A lot of times, people get asked, well, how much, how much of your budget is for salaries? This year, for fiscal '24, we're projecting about 43% of our total expenses. It's a little bit lower in prior years, and that's because we are budgeting so much for capital this year. Due to ARPA, we also are using some of our reserves, those kind of things. And salaries, we do, did increase the dollars by about 5%. That reflects all our contractual increases, our raises, increase in health costs, physicians, all those kind of things. Our operating expenses add about 33 million, make up 39% of our total expenses. And then we have our capital at 15 million. That is an increase of about 2.7 million from fiscal '23. We expect to be spending a large share of our ARPA dollars in '24, plus the, we budgeted for the capital come out of our general fund reserves. By service area, and I'm probably not going to read all of these to you, but you can see our largest category is still, the most expensive thing the county provides is public safety and legal services. And ranges, you can also see the capital projects are at 23.9%. So those are probably some of the most significant changes we have. And mental health, of course, actually dropped off in '23, but you can definitely see it's gone now. I also provided expenditures by department. Again, the sheriff's office with the jail is our largest category at 19.5 million. And then I thought I would mention Board of Supervisors, General Supervision category because that looks kind of unusual at 9 million. But that's because a lot of the ARPA projects happen to be budgeted under that activity. So that will be a temporary thing, I think. Then our rural expenditures by program, these are things that are allowed by law to be charged to the rural portions of the county. So we have a, a portion of the sheriff's patrol services. Then we invest quite a bit in secondary roads. That's actually 48.6% of what we tax for rural goes to the secondary roads fund. Then we have little, the county libraries come out of here. We did, and that's 3% of the rural levy. We did increase that by 6% this year to a total of about $180,000 for all of them together. We do provide planning and zoning services to the unincorporated areas of the county, and that's about 2%. They, we do collect permit fees that offset that portion. And then consolidated dispatch is probably the largest change here at 9.6% now. That cost doubled this year roughly because the participating entities, two reasons. They, we increased their overall budget, but they also elected to switch from their method of allocation. allocation from calls and population to purely property valuation. So that increased our share of that.
So the county alone has no control over that, correct?
No, that is a 28E agreement that, there's about nine, I think, participating cities plus the board. So the board, I believe, has one vote on that.
It could be discussed next year, I guess.
More to come.
Yeah, we're working on that.
More to come next year.
So our total budgeted expenditures this year, and I did not include transfers, 77.8 million. That's an increase of 8.7 million from FY '23, but that's mostly due to our spending our ARPA and general fund balance on capital. Again, public safety and legal's the largest category. That increased 1.77 million. And in addition to salaries, which I don't call out in any of these, but if you recall, the food costs for the jail and health services were large increases this year. Those two things total just under 736,000. And then, under physical health and social services, that total is 789,000. The increase, I'm sorry. And that increase is mostly due to the $0.5 million we're budgeting to spend of the opioid settlement. That was another new source of revenue for us that we'll be investing in the community. The rest of these are much smaller, except, and I'll comment on debt service expenditures because the total debt service expenditures reduced 457,000. And that is more than you saw the tax askings go down, but that's because this number includes debt that's being repaid by the separate E-911 board and also by the solid waste management commission. And then our capital projects, again, increased substantially due primarily to ARPA and then other projects. We have a lot of work our staff is committing to do in fiscal '24 to get all those things done. Then to talk about revenues, the next slide talks about it by program area. Again, taxes are our largest revenue source, make up about 44%. The next one is intergovernmental revenue. That will include things like grants, road use taxes, those kind of things. We did have a large increase in use of money in property with interest revenue, as we discussed before. I think that's the only thing there. And then I give you a slide, so you can also see that by department. Again, the board, general supervision, looks really high, but that's because we're recognizing ARPA revenue as we spend it. So our total revenue excluding transfers in is 70.7 million. Is again, an increase from the prior year, primarily due to ARPA. And intergovernmental revenue increased by 3.7, primarily due to, we have a Destination Iowa grant for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, and then a lot of ARPA. And we also have had a new tax credit, the business property tax backfill, that they say we're going to get for at least one year. We also had a reduction of payments from the Grundy County Road Paving. We talked about interest increasing, and then we have miscellaneous revenue increasing, mostly by that $500,000 in the opioid settlement. And then, for some reason, in '23, the reimbursement from the solid waste commission didn't get budgeted. So that looks like an increase here of 1.7, but as we go through our budget amendment, I'll be fixing that for 2023. I, whoops, gave you the slide again for our GO bonds outstanding. We did talk about this early on, and you can see how low the county's debt is. We do have a very good position with that. It was surprising to see that our debt service levy, I kind of expected this to be the lowest, but we're actually the seventh. So there are others who have even less debt than Black Hawk County does. The bulk of our repayment is principal. We were able to borrow that money during a time when interest rates were very low. And as you pay down the debt, of course, the interest declines, so we're mostly paying principal at this point. I did include slides that show you roughly what we're planning to do for capital projects, and these are all things we discussed many times, so I don't think I'm going to go through them. But I just thought you might like to have them all gathered in one place. The big, the large projects are the Casey Lake restoration, and then a lot of work on the courthouse and parking lots, those kind of things. We also budgeted $937,000 in the secondary roads fund for equipment replacement. I listed those out for you. And then the American Rescue Plan projects, we've set that pretty high, but a lot of that's for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. And then, we've got some information technology improvements that I think will happen in 2024, treasurer's office renovations. And as you all know, there's a lot of planning going on to how we're going to use it and the timing of when we will spend those funds. And then I did put in a slide for opioid, but I don't have much to say. We're starting to receive money from it, and we budgeted to spend $500,000 in 2024. And I think we will be having a presentation possibly next week with some, a suggestion about how to begin investing those monies. And I included the staffing changes. We did several restructurings. The county attorney department, if you remember, we added a full-time victim witness coordinator, eliminated two part-time positions. We reclassified two positions in human resources and added a part-time intern. And then, in information technology, we plan to reassign one health department individual 50% to the IT department. We added positions in the health department. We added a full-time clinical dental hygienist, that's primarily revenue funded. We added two part-time temporary community health workers, and if you recall, that request is for a full-time employee. This is a little more difficult to staff, but also more affordable. We added the 50% preparedness coordinator. That is a position that is shared with the emergency management agency, and again, that's grant-funded, so no cost to us. We increased one public health nurse by 10% from a three-tenths position to a four-tenths position. Again, that was grant-funded, and the grant provided for that. And then, we reduced their staffing by reassigning 50% of one physician to IT. Conservation gained one full-time naturalist position. And then the board of supervisors, at this point, we've approved adding a marketing coordinator with a delayed starting date of January 1st. And again, that original request had been full-time all year, so we reduced the cost by delaying it for the six months. And I think those are all the prepared comments I have. I really do want to say thank you to everyone on the board of supervisors for your leadership throughout the process. I know it was, it felt very long this year. Hopefully, we'll pick up speed going forward. But then I also have a big thank you to all your staff. Somebody said before the meeting, as two people were trying to help me get this presentation hooked up, that it takes a village, and that's really true. All your staff did a great job of working on their budgets, both your department heads, elected officials, and their financial staff. There are a lot of people that put effort into the budget. And I especially need to thank human resources this year because they had to help me quite a bit with getting going on the salary, since it was my first time around with this. So I think, I think everybody did their best to do a fair budget this year that's fair to getting services provided to our taxpayers and also not costing the taxpayers a lot. And hopefully, you all feel that way.
Thank you, Michelle. This is a very good presentation. I appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. She did, I will say, on her behalf, she did try to get it just two slides to a page to just condense so we didn't kill too many trees. And it wasn't possible. It was the, everything, some of the pages were very small. So I said, it was great information. I refer back to this frequently, so I thank you for that, too. I guess this is a point where we ask for public comments or questions. I don't know that we've received any in years, but we'll see if this is a first. On Zoom or in the room, is there anyone with a question or comment?
I hear a few crickets.
Me, too. Moving on to the comments by the board of supervisors. So who would like to begin? Go ahead.
Well, I think we're presenting a good budget to the constituents that we serve here in the county. Well, at the same time that we're decreasing the overall tax askings, we're making new investments in public health, we're making new investments in conservation, and we're going to see some new faces here in the courthouse, too, that will help communicate and even better deliver our services. So I thank everybody, every department, all the finance staff in those departments, and especially Michelle's leadership on this. I think you've done a really fantastic job stepping into this role, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You know, I would add that, again, echo the compliments to Michelle. I know it's your first year, but first year here.
Yes.
I have done it before.
But having a tried hand certainly helps here. And your ability to work in a different format, not having a singular mayor, but instead having, you know, five board members who have differences of opinions, differences of perspective. I appreciate that you were able, and really, the board was able, to come to an agreement. This budget reflects, I think, compromise from all of us on what we would have outlined as initial priorities. But I think that ultimately, it is a, it's a strong budget, as noted before, with a decrease overall to our tax, to our tax askings. And so I'm supportive of the budget that has been presented.
Dan, would you like to?
It's a good budget. Each year, I just want to look at sustainability. And frequently, I'm going to remind the board that we need to exercise our full authority in matters, especially financial matters, as they come in front of the board.
Tom, is there anything you'd like to comment on?
Yeah, I think overall, in all honesty, I've been through 19 of these county budgets. This one seemed like it was kind of really uneventful and easy in a way compared to what we've gone to over the years. The only caution that I would have is all the positions that we've increased this year and last year. I hope there doesn't come a day like there was a few years ago when we had to cut just to keep the taxes down reasonably. Regards to the reserves, I guess my biggest fault was, for years, the board was told by our count, or by our auditor on our annual report, that the reserves should be around that 25%. So I guess that's why I've always been stuck on that 73% mark. Department heads have done a good job, as they always have. I've worked with quite a few of them over the years, the same ones, and they do a good job. And obviously, we put Michelle into a tough situation bringing her in late. She did an excellent job. I think she probably felt it was refreshing coming into a government entity that had large reserves and low bonds. So don't see that too often. So there's a few things that I would like to have changed overall, but it is what it is, and we'll move on. Hopefully, the years to come, we'll be able to do the same job. So I thank everybody.
Thank you. How do you follow all that? I was going to say, everybody's comments being so great, I guess, yes, just thanks to everyone. The department heads, and as Michelle mentioned, all of the people that have been involved with working through this budget, I think we owe you a debt of thanks. But a thanks also to the supervisors for working through that. I had to process and doing it so well. Like you said, we have five different opinions and thoughts and processes that we all use differently, but I think that's what makes us a stronger board and a better board. So I appreciate that and the working together with all of you. But our staff, we have great staff, great elected officials. A special thank you to Michelle, I said, who spent an unbelievable amount of time, like you say, joining us, like, the 1st of November and coming in to us when the budget started for you, but for many of us that had been working on it already. So you've done a tremendous job, and thank you, I can't say enough for that. And a great presentation as well. I think it's already been a challenging year for us, only in the first three months that we've had, and it sounds like it'll be a challenging remainder of the year. So I say, thank you all for all your efforts, and you work so well together and with us, so can't thank you enough for all that. On that, we'll end and move into the motion to close the public hearing and receive written comments, if there are any. Were there any, Mr.?
There were no written comments in the file, unless anybody received some that we don't have.
No, we did not. No, thank you.
I'm making a motion to close. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item eight is the resolution that the proposed Black Hawk County budget for the year ending June 30th, 2024 be approved and adopted, including total askings of $36,185,396.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I don't assume there's any questions or comments. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution that the appropriations be approved at 100% for the Black Hawk County budget for the year ending June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Great. Ananmas. Isn't always got to be, but it was great to do it. Yeah, thank you. Item 11, any reports or information from the board?
Well, the other supervisors know that the space committee, Space Utilization Committee is meeting again this week. We met just about a week and a half ago, but just trying to move forward so that we've got all the ducks in a row as we plan these investments with the American Rescue dollars.
Thank you, Chris, for bringing that up. Anything else? I was, oh, I was going to ask, I think, I had on my calendar, and didn't mean to put it on April Fool's Day, but the day to remind us that we needed to be working on the jail RFP and any other considerations, I guess, if there were some to be locally, and I didn't know if that's been scheduled, but something maybe just to follow up on.
We had, we had just, we've had just one meeting so far with one prospective client that was looking. I know that Tony was having meetings recently with the folks at People's Clinic and was going to pull us back in, depending on how those went. That's the latest.
Oh, okay.
That's one program in particular, it's just not sustainable. And I'm going to question it till the end.
Yeah, if you saw that number to end today of that increase over there, I don't think we can continue this in years to come.
Discussion for another time? So I'm assuming, like you say, and that's, is Tony scheduling those?
Yes.
Okay, because we need to probably be in touch with, making sure. And Michelle, were you a part of that?
I have not been yet, no.
Okay. I'll just thank you for the update. And I know we had a request from Amanda, I don't know, I thought maybe you'd bring it up today for board members to participate in health meetings. I think there's some health meetings, so.
Yeah, I sent you an email.
Yeah.
Just looking for two volunteers to post cards for the third party administrator. And the following week, we'll have presentations, I think, with the board of our recommendations.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about that?
I'm happy to participate.
Okay. Two.
I need one, so.
You got one, you need one more. Okay, thank you. All right. Well, we'll move in, if no one has any questions or comments, we'll move on to the closed session. This is a resolution to proceed into closed session for discussion of information concerning physical and/or critical infrastructure, security, security procedures, and emergency preparedness where disclosure could reasonably be expected to jeopardize county property.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item B is a motion to adjourn the board of supervisors' meeting in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Item 13, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion. Moved and seconded. I don't have to do all in favor. Meeting is adjourned.